Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, March tenth, meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Could the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
President.
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Hayes.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. I have one appointment to make tonight, and that is the appointment of Daniel Lang as member of the Assessment Review Board for a term to expire on September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. We have one presentation tonight, which we have every year at this meeting, and so without further ado, we're going to ask the gentleman from the Eastchester Irish American Social Club to please come on up and tell us what we know is going to be happening this coming Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Village Trustees. Steven Juvein, thirty-seven Hickory Hill Road, Eastchester. Hang in there. Spring is coming. The grips of winter are just about to let loose, and what better way, I cannot think of a better way to celebrate spring is here than to help celebrate our Saint Patrick's Day Parade. The Eastchester Irish American Social Club, in our forty-eighth year, we are very proud to sponsor our tenth annual Saint Patrick's Day Parade. Can you believe we've ten years with the parade? Each year, the parade gets better and better. This year, we recognize some very important people to the club and to the community and to the parish in the area. Our two grand marshals are the co-founders of our parade. They are Tom Juvein and Jim Hendry. And our honoree is Father Eric Roser, the pastor of Immaculate Conception Church and the Assumption Church. Tom and Jim and Father Roser personify what we look for in the people that we honor. Both Tom and Jim have been, are very successful in their fields. Tom's a senior vice president at UBS, and Jim has climbed the ranks in the NASA, in the police departments in New York City and now a NASA homicide detective. They are men who have not only worked hard for the club and for the parade, but they've given back to the community in many ways. And just brief examples in coaching and members of advisory boards. So they basically, they just, what they do is they put back their energy right back into the community, so we wanted to honor those two men this year with the parade, as are grand marshals. Father Roser is another man who has done an amazing amount of work for the community and for our parishes. There's a new gym, as everybody sees there now. Promised for a long time, there it is. And Father Roser has been very supportive of our club, very supportive of the parade. We start the parade in the Immaculate Conception parking lot. So the parade is this Sunday, March sixteenth, steps off at three P.M. from Immaculate Conception. It proceeds up Main Street to Route twenty-two and finishes at the Lake Isle Country Club. Now, this year, we have over fifty marching units, ten of which are pipe bands. Love the pipe bands. One or maybe two of those bands are pipe bands from Ireland. We're fortunate enough to be right up against the, one of the, what we think is the second largest parade in New York City, after hours. We're benefiting from getting some pipe bands from the city. So we're looking forward to that, and that'd be a wonderful day to come out, enjoy the parade. We have, we're doing something a little bit different this year. In our journal, we have a virtual journal, so the Eastchester Irish are truly green. We are, instead of printing copies of the journal, we have online ready, you know, for all our sponsors, the journal. So we're looking forward, we thank you for your support. You've been very supportive over the years, Mr. Mayor, and members of the trustees, and we're looking forward to you enjoying the parade this year again. And again, March sixteenth at three P.M. And the president of the club, John Collins, is here to fill in some of the blanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I get started, let me apologize. You've, we've substituted out the melodic sounds of Patrick Murtagh for the less melodic sounds of the Queen's accent of your president, myself, John Collins. I am president of the Eastchester Irish American Social Club, but nevertheless, I am glad to be here, and what I lack in a true Irish accent, I make up in enthusiasm. We are celebrating, as you've heard, our tenth year of having this parade, and by now, we've heard the story, this was the brain child of Tom Juvein and Jim Hendry, sitting around a barbecue. And it is appropriate that these men are being honored as the grand marshals, along with Father Roser, who since coming to Tuckahoe to Immaculate Conception and Assumption has been just a stalwart for this parade, has supported in every, any way imaginable. So it's very much, it's great that we're able to honor these three gentlemen. But of course, in order for us to have this parade, we look forward to the support of the Village of Tuckahoe, and you guys have been great. We also are fortunate enough to have great sponsors as well, and I just want to take a moment to mention that our emerald sponsors for this year include Radgetay Real Estate, Lawrence Medical Associates PC, Quest Contracting, Flattery General Contracting, and Country Bank. And as an added bonus, being that this is the tenth year, we want to branch out and go in a different direction, we have for the first time a Green Lion sponsor, and that Green Lion sponsor is also Radgetay Real Estate. And as we always ask, we ask the viewers and people that support this parade to kindly patronize our sponsors whenever possible. The route of the parade starts at Immaculate Conception and is going to travel north on Main Street where it hooks up with Route twenty-two, and then we'll continue to travel north, past Mill Road up to Lake Isle Country Club. We have, as Steve has mentioned, we have numerous bands. We have the various schools marching. I'd like to also mention that Manhattan College, my alma mater, will be there. Manhattan's playing Iona tonight for the MAC title, so I thought it was worth a shout out to them. I don't think I could any further than to say, again, March sixteenth at three P.M., if you guys are sick of the snow as I am, this is a great way to get out, stop the snow out of here by taking part in the parade, so I hope to see all of you there, and I understand the trolley will be there as well.
The trolley will, actually. It's on our agenda tonight, so.
Wonderful.
We're looking forward to it.
Well, thank you for the time, and I, like I said, I look forward to seeing you on Sunday.
Well, thank you both for coming out. It's nice that you do this each year, and the weather gods are going to be shining down on you. We appreciate it.
I guarantee seventy in a sunny sky.
I'll take fifty.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. That's going to bring us to the adoption of minutes. Approval of minutes to the regular meeting of February tenth, two thousand fourteen. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences?
No, we do not.
We do not. And that will bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything that's on our agenda tonight. And with nothing, we're going to move on to our resolutions. Our first resolution, resolution number one, is a resolution authorizing a home rule request to the state legislature. This is to correct the pension placement of Police Officer Santiago, and I'm going to read some of the where-ases and here-ases for this, so we can, people at home can understand. When the Village of Tuckahoe Police Officer Christopher J. Santiago was first hired by the Village of Tuckahoe on August fourth, two thousand eight, he was inadvertently enrolled in the wrong New York State Pension Plan. Police Officer Santiago was incorrectly enrolled in the New York State Pension Plan three seventy-five I, when he should have been enrolled in the correct New York State Pension Plan, which is Pension Plan three eighty-four D. New York State Senator George Latimer and Assemblywoman, Assemblyperson Amy Pollan, they sponsored and introduced state legislation Senate Bill five nine nine four and Assembly Bill eight six six two to correct the error. It's stated above in the enrollment of Police Officer Santiago in the incorrect state pension plan. So the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Tuckahoe has determined to make the following home rule request to the state legislature in support of the above-mentioned state legislation. I just want to offer apologies to Officer Santiago, and I certainly want to thank Amy Pollan and Senator Latimer for sponsoring this, and we're going to right the wrong here. So do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is ratifying village board action authorizing the village clerk to issue a special permit under the cabaret law to tucked away for Friday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, from nine P.M. to midnight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the use of the trolley for the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the town of Eastchester for Sunday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, to be used for a townwide tour. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the use of the trolley for the Irish Parade this coming Sunday, March sixteenth. The village will be providing the driver for this. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is approving the Tuckahoe Union Free School District's request to use the community center as a polling place for the annual budget vote and trustee election, which will be on Tuesday, May twentieth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six is approving the County Board of Elections' request for the use of the community center for the federal primary on June twenty-fourth, the primary election on September ninth, and the general election on November fourth, from five-thirty in the morning to nine-thirty in the evening. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number seven is to ratify village board approval of the County Board of Elections... Hold on a minute. John, is that correct?
It appears to be repetitive as to resolution number six.
One's ratification and...
Right, the resolution number six is the correct.
All right, so we're going to take seven. All right, so number eight is now going to be... Why, we didn't pick up on that? Okay, resolution number seven is approving the certiorary settlement for GTF Realty Corporation, one eighty-one Main Street, section sixty-eight, block four, lot fifty, for tax years two thousand six through two thousand twelve, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and thirteen cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Okay, resolution number eight is approving the certiorary settlement for GPD properties, number eight through twenty Marbledale Road, section seventy-four, block one, lot one, for tax years two thousand eleven through two thousand thirteen, in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred ten dollars and eighty-eight cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number nine is approving auto damages settlement to a vehicle owned by Todd Judas caused by a DPW truck in October of two thousand thirteen in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, which amount is within the village automobile insurance deductible, which is twenty-five hundred dollars. A signed general release by Todd Judas has been received. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And I just want to talk about this a little bit, because we had a discussion at our work session, and I'm going to ask our counselor to talk about the differences. We had an incident during one of the snowstorms we had this past winter where one of our plow trucks damaged a vehicle that was parked in the village. And there's a difference between that type of a claim versus this type of a claim, so I'm putting our counselor on the spot here, but it shows how able he is to take this.
Sure. So Mayor, based upon the village board's work session, I conducted research into the difference between what I'll call simple negligence or a simple automobile accident, and that involving snow plowing. And there's actually a two thousand decision from the Court of Appeals of the State of New York, which is the highest court in New York State, and the decision differentiates between the type of vehicles that are being used. In the decision, the court found that there were two vehicles at play that the court was reviewing. One was a snowplow, and the other was a street sweeper, from different communities, different municipalities, but the court said, "We'll hear the appeal as a consolidated action." And what the court found, that those vehicles qualified as what's defined as hazard vehicles under New York Vehicle and Traffic Law, section eleven oh three B. And because they were hazard vehicles, similar to police, fire, and ambulance, that are emergency vehicles, that there's a standard of negligence, that's actually, there's not a standard of negligence that's applied, but there's actually a standard of recklessness that's applied, which is a higher burden to be met by a plaintiff. And in the Court of Appeals' decision, they found that the street sweeper, who was actually engaged in work on a public highway, which includes a public roadway, they get the benefit of the protection of that section of the Vehicle and Traffic Law, and because they found that the operator only engaged in simple negligence and not recklessness, they dismissed that appeal. In addition to that, they found that a street sweeper also qualified as a hazard vehicle, and an accident occurred in another community, and because, again, it was simple negligence as opposed to recklessness, they dismissed that appeal. So when our insurance carrier, although we're insured for these type of events here in the village, when they review these cases, they're reviewing these not with an eye towards negligence as the standard of care, but recklessness as the standard of care. And under common law theories, recklessness is a much higher burden for a plaintiff to meet as opposed to negligence. Typically, you have, you hear negligence, you hear gross negligence, and you hear recklessness. And gross negligence and recklessness sit at a level above simple negligence. So these type of vehicles are going to get the same benefit as police, fire, and ambulance that are engaged in perhaps a police chase or an emergency situation or responding to a fire, because they're all qualifying as hazard vehicles under the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law.
So in this instance here, the DPW vehicle was, I don't know what it was, maybe it was a dump truck or something like that, or one of the smaller vehicles that they had, but it doesn't fit in that same category as you're talking about.
Well, right, with respect to resolution number nine, our DPW vehicle was actually on the New York State thruway, and a piece of the truck fell off the truck, causing damage to another vehicle on the thruway. And they were just operating the vehicle, driving, it was a pure negligence claim, and they weren't engaged in any type of activity that would rise to the level of a hazard vehicle. Simply, they were just operating and driving the vehicle on the thruway. That wouldn't qualify under the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law, so in that instance, you would use a standard of care as just pure negligence.
Okay. And somebody who was, had their vehicle injured by one of our plows or a police car or something like that, of course, they should put a claim through their own automobile insurance.
Yeah, I would certainly, certainly recommend that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Thanks for doing the research on it for us. We need a roll call for that.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number ten is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with a consortium of municipalities to challenge a rate increase of, get this, twenty-two point nine percent, which is sought to be imposed by United Water of Nourishell. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I'll gladly talk about this. United Water has, they proposed a ridiculous rate increase of twenty-three percent for water usage within the municipal borders of our village. What we're doing here is we're joining a consortium of other municipalities, and we've all agreed to go ahead and hire a law firm to go ahead and challenge this rate increase. So we've been in this consortium before, and fortunately for us, since we're such a small municipality, our contribution is on the smallest end. It's going to range between twenty-five hundred dollars on the low end for forty-one hundred dollars on the high end. So we're joined with, the other municipalities that we're joined with is Nourishell, the town of Eastchester, Dobbs Ferry, Hastings, Bronxville, Pelham, and Pelham Manor. So we're certainly hoping that we're going to prevail on this. Do we have a roll call?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And resolution number eleven, we're going to pay some bills. This is resolution eleven approving payment of vouchers in the amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, consisting of abstract number thirty-six for two hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars. Abstract number thirty-seven for three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. The three largest invoices paid were sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars for work on the Crestwood Streetscape Project, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars for two, two thousand fourteen Ford Police Interceptors, and twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for yard waste disposal for the period July one through December thirty-one, two thousand thirteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And we have one other resolution to add to our agenda tonight, which is going to be resolution twelve. And this is a resolution scheduling a public hearing concerning the repeal of section two dash twelve of the Village Code of the Village of Tuckahoe entitled Residency of Officers' Employees and the enactment of Local Law Number Two of two thousand fourteen, which shall repeal section two dash twelve of the Village Code of the Village of Tuckahoe and restate residency requirements applicable to certain positions within the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion for scheduling that public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that is going to bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and as always, we will start with our very able Chief of Police, Mr. John Costanza.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I just have a couple of announcements. I just wanted to talk about, this past week, we met, we had a threat assessment team, and this team consists of members of the Tuckahoe Police Department, the Eastchester Police Department, the Tuckahoe School District, and the Eastchester School District. And the purpose of this team is to work collaboratively towards the safety of our children. We, because of the jurisdictional boundaries and the school district boundaries, we're kind of unique in that half of the village goes to Eastchester Schools, the other half goes to Tuckahoe Schools, and the same goes with the town, that there are many town residents within the Tuckahoe School District, and so we share, we share some common interests. And about three years ago, under the direction of Lieutenant Margaret Bellis, we put together this threat assessment team, and we meet periodically to discuss the issues and making assessments to make our school safe and as well as the safety of our children. So I just wanted to say that we had met this week. We were working together with all the entities to address the issues of our young people, and as always, it's always a successful meeting, sharing their thoughts and ideas, and we are going to bring the presentation to both school districts, just to let the public know what we're doing and why, you know, why the team exists. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about that here this evening. One of the things that we did talk about at this particular meeting is that our district attorney, Janet DeFiori, using seized assets, has funded a program to, it's called tip four one one, for people to text in tips, anonymous tips. And particularly with young people continuing to be using smartphones and constantly texting, we thought that this was, not just for young people, but particularly young people, to use this as a tool to let us know what's going on, if there's drug activities, if there's bullying, if there's threats of violence within the schools. It would be a great opportunity to use this technology to augment what's going on with the threat assessment team. So this program is not up and running just yet. It will be in the next week or so. It's a great tool. It's within, using the city of Yonkers now for several months. They find it to be extremely helpful in identifying and solving crimes, so we're looking forward to that. We thank the district attorney for leading the way in this great program, and we think it's going to be a great tool for us in law enforcement. I just want to, you know, about a month or so ago, the Tuckahoe Police Department released their annual report, you know, submitted it to the, to the mayor and the village board. We have copies out here in the hall, and they will go out onto the website. It just pretty much summarizes the activities for the past year, and we invite our residents to look at it, read it, and certainly give us any comments or recommendations they have after they've reviewed it. And I just want to close, I know this is Trustee Hayes' last meeting, I just want to congratulate her and thank you for your service and for your support of me personally and the police department as a whole. You have been a tremendously hard worker for this village. We see that as a department head and see you out in the village, and you're certainly going to be missed, and I just want to say thank you for your service.
Thank you, Chief.
And that's my report.
Thank you, Chief. Frank?
Mr. DiMarco from our Department of Public Works.
Mayor, board members, I'm going to go out on a limb tonight and say that Wednesday's storm is possibly going to be our last.
Oh, I didn't even know we were having a storm.
We have a rainstorm coming our way, and that's really, hopefully, about the end of it. But again, I'm going on a limb, and that's going to be our last sunshine ahead of us. But I just want to let everybody know, they've been calling about potholes and catch basin repairs and manhole repairs. We started getting out there yesterday, today, and we're getting there. So if you see anything that we're missing, just kindly, just give us a call, let us know where it is, and we'll take care of it. Everybody, shortly after that, we're going to begin our tree pruning program. We haven't done that for a while because of all the inclement weather. We usually do a lot of that in the winter months, but we're going to start doing that Most importantly, we've had, we have work, we have work being performed on Verdi and Hollywood. They're doing oil gas replacement, all main gas replacements, and a lot of the residents have expressed concern about what's going on, the lack of notification, and really going on, the lack of notification, and really don't know what went hap, you know, what really happened there. Con Edison usually, I mean, this is not, nothing new. This has been going on for years. But what Con Edison normally does is they, they inform everybody of the work that's being performed way before it's being performed. I don't think that that happened here on Verdi and Hollywood. But I am working with Con Edison. I am working with Miller Pipeline, who is performing the work. And I'll make sure that everything gets expedited in a timely fashion. But most importantly, what I wanted to say, there have been gas leaks there for many years. And there's always been excavation that's been done there, major repairs. But I think now that they're replacing the mains and also the subsidiaries that lead into the homes, that'll be all taken care of. And once that's all taken care of, I was promised that the roads would be paved from curb to curb, from Verdi leading Midway probably to Hollywood. But I'll make sure whatever excavation is being done, that the repairs will be done properly.
Yes, I know. I spoke to a couple of the residents up there. They were quite upset that they didn't really get any notification. And I agree with them. I think that, you know, for somebody to knock on their door and say, hey, we're going to turn your gas off on a cold day, and the gas is going to be off for, some of those homes, they were out all day long. You know, they, I think they dropped the ball on this one. I was glad that the resident contacted me. I spoke to you. I know you've talked to quite a few of the residents up there. So, I think if anyone has any other questions, can they call you down at your office?
Absolutely, yes.
And that number? Good. Thank you, Frank. Thanks for keeping tabs on it, too.
And Jeanette. Oh, you're going to be missed. It's been a pleasure working with you. And thank you for all your help and assistance, really. You've been a big help with everything I've needed. But most importantly, best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Take care.
Bill? Bill Williams is our facilities man and our building inspector.
Good evening, Mayor.
And he has a nice winter beer, too.
Very briefly tonight, all I wanted to let the board know is that we're moving forward with some of our projects. As you can see here in the room, we've started with our LED lighting and the replacement of the communications room and the transmission room. So, we'll be moving those along. I know tomorrow morning, we start with the company coming in to do the actual work of the equipment inside.
And this month, there's no zoning and planning meeting, I believe, right?
Correct. Yeah, both meetings were canceled.
So, they need a good 30-day window to get that job done. So, I'm, I can't tell you how excited I am. Next month's meeting, I won't have to start the meeting off beating the microphone and looking for thumbs up from June in the back, you know, for 10 years that's been going on. Well, a lot longer than that, but 10 years that I've been.
I know you're excited, but the, the village in the whole should be excited over the LEDs and the savings that we're going to have.
Big savings.
It's about 70%. As you can see, they're much brighter than the other lights that we had.
Good work.
Okay. I also would like to thank Trustee Hayes for all she's done, especially for the building department around budget time. We have to crunch all those numbers. She will be missed.
Thank you, Bill. Counselor?
The only thing I wanted to say is, as echoed by the other department heads about Trustee Hayes, it's really been a pleasure and a privilege to work with her. I'm going to miss her deeply, as the other department heads mentioned. And I know we meet once a month, and we have a work session once a month, but the, the residents of this village should really understand just how hardworking and how many hours she's expensed during the course of the day, and the weeks, and the emails, and the memos, and the letters back and forth. She's been an asset to this village. And I know I'm going to miss her, but I wish her the best of luck.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Camille?
The Clerk's Office is going to miss Jeanette very much. Many phone calls will be missing. Good luck.
She'll still call you, though. Thank you. Miscellaneous business, we have a village board reorganization meeting, which occurs every year. This year is going to be on Monday, April 7, 2014. The, after that, we're going to have a village board meeting, which is also going to be our budget hearing. And that's going to be on Monday, a week after that. It will be on Monday, April 14, 2014. So, that's going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. And as we always do, we're going to start with your Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordan.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Just a few announcements. As Mayor Eklund mentioned, there will be no planning or zoning board meeting this month. They've both been canceled. The next planning board meeting will be on April 23 at 7:30. The work session is on April 8 at 7 o'clock. The next zoning board meeting will be on 7:30 on April 9, and there's a 6:30 work session that same day. I just wanted to remind all of our residents that there is an election coming up on March 18. There are two contested seats for election. I would urge all of our residents to exercise their ro, right to vote. Remember last year when we were walking through the village, we were told by one resident that he was exercising his right not to vote. And we thought, as we walked around, we talked about it, and said, that really is not exercising a right at all. What that is, is it's a, it's a vote for tyranny. And I hope that that is, and I, it was the only one that I heard. But we do, we do not always have full attendance at these elections. And I think it's something that, as a village, we could, we could stand to improve upon because it's important. The League of Women Voters yesterday actually, on the, on the other side of the spectrum, hosted a debate at Village Hall at 3:00 PM. And it was a spirited debate where the, each of the trustees presented their issues and their points of view and were questioned. And I wanted to acknowledge, first of all, all of the, all of the, the League of Women Voters for giving their time and actually promoting democracy by making sure people are able to make an informed choice. And also, for all of the candidates for giving their time and preparedness and for their incisive responses. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge Trustee Hayes' very last meeting with us and echo the sentiments of all those who have spoken before. What an honor it has been to serve with you and a pleasure. What an outstanding job you've done, how you've given your all every day in every way, and how the village will miss you, and I'll miss you on the board, and wish you all the best.
Thank you very much, Tom. Trustee Quigley?
Thank you, Mayor. Library highlights, many as always. You can always check at the library for a lot of the details. You can call them at 961-2121. Just a couple I'd like to mention. Something that's new and actually quite intriguing, on Saturday, March 22, from 10 to 1:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, will be a workshop on pruning and care of young trees. So, if you've got any new plantings in your yard, want to learn a little bit about how to handle trees and a little bit of horticulture, this is a time to do it. It'll be at the library, Saturday, March 22. Lots of teen events. The movie coming up this week is The Hunger Games: Catching Fire. There'll be a teen gaming afternoon on Wednesday, March 26 at 4:00. On Monday, March 31st, at 4:00, the Teen Anemie or Anem Club, shows how I don't know some of these terms. For the two- to six-year-olds, there's storytimes every Friday at 11:00 at the library. For the zero- to two-years-old, there are also baby time stories, songs and rhymes. That's every Thursday at 11:00. There's a Spanish bilingual storytime coming up this upcoming Saturday, March 15 at 11:00. This is for the two- to six-year-old group. Even a family storytime, this is for parents and kids four to 10-years-old. That'll be Monday, March 24 at 4:00. Lots of great adult movies. Gravity, which you might recall was one of the nominees for Best Picture, will be on March 5 at 12:30. Grill Rising, March 12 at 12:30. All Is Lost, that's a Robert Redford movie, at March, on March 19 at 12:30. The sort of prequel to Mary Poppins, Saving Mr. Banks, with Tom Hanks and Emma Thompson, on Wednesday, March 26 at 12:30. And something, actually, I had the privilege of attending last year and hope to do again this year, is a memoir gathering on Saturday, March 29 at 11:00 at the library. These are people who've been working over the past year with a memoir expert, drawing, writing up and drafting their own memoirs of particular aspects of their life in and around the Tuckahoe, Eastchester area. And it was a very impressive performance of the storytellers last year when we had that. Couple Chamber of Commerce notes, they're going to be gearing up for their annual scholarships that they present to a graduating senior from both the Tuckahoe and Eastchester High School. You'll be hearing more about that. The Tuckahoe, Eastchester Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce is also one of the sponsors of Restaurant Week. There'll be two different weeks, April 21 and 20 through the 27, and May 12 through the 18. This will be especially in honor of the town of Eastchester's 350th anniversary. We'd like to welcome a new member to the Chamber of Commerce. It's called Tucked Away. You might have seen it. It's a new bar and grill right around the corner, at the corner of Main and Yonkers Avenue. And finally, one of the members of the Chamber of Commerce, Mambo 64, right across the street from us, at 64 Main Street, received a Very Good, which is the second highest restaurant review rating in the New York Times yesterday. So, it was a very impressive review. It's a very impressive restaurant. And as I said, a good member of the Chamber of Commerce. And to further embarrass Jeanette, as I said the last time we were talking about this, is that her diligence as a member of the board has made all of us do a much better job, if nothing else, to try to keep up with her and her questions and her suggestions. And putting it all together, we were, I think, a more attentive board. I think we were a more knowledgeable board. And a lot of that is credit to Jeanette because she is on top of virtually every issue that we've dealt with throughout the year, and especially when it comes to budget time. I just love that I've talked about her silver book. We're at these budget meetings on Saturday mornings, and we say, did we do something a couple of years ago? And sure enough, she opens up to the page, and she reads from it and says, now we know what we talked about. And that just helps us so much in getting a frame of reference so that we can go forward and make sure we do the right decisions on the budgets this year. Especially we'll miss her sense of humor. She has such a nice self-deprecating, easy way of keeping us on task without feeling, making it to be oppressive or anything of that nature. You want to work with her. And we have enjoyed working with her. And she will be very missed. And I'll miss her very much as my sort of seatmate over here on the left or right side of the bench, depending how you look at it. So, Jeanette, good luck. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
That's very nice. Thank you. Trustee Luise?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start off the evening by discussing the Tuckahoe seniors, who will begin their St. Patrick's Day festivities tomorrow at 12 noon at Father Fata Hall, when Town Supervisor Tony Colavito will be bringing Irish soda bread down for everyone to kick off the St. Patrick's Day festivities. Then the seniors themselves will celebrate St. Patrick's Day again on March 13 at Rory Doran's Pub, Rory Doran's Pub in Yonkers. They will be leaving from Father Fata Hall at 11:30, and then there will also be a pickup at Four Union. On March 27, Trish Chambers will return to the Tuckahoe Senior Center to present Rosie the Riveter, a discussion about working women during World War II. I'd like to mention that the Eastchester Nutrition Program began today at the Tuckahoe Community Center. And by all accounts, everything went smoothly. I'd like to tip my hat to John Galuzzi, our new director there, who was immensely helpful in facilitating this movement from Lake Isle Down to the community center. They'll be in the community center for a good eight months at least. They will not impact any of the programs that the community center provides for the residents. So, I'd like to congratulate John on a job well done. So now, I get to say what I have to say about my bookend. I said it all last month. And one of the most important things, which I forgot to mention about my colleague, is she was the one who, when we had one of our many conversations throughout the day about village business, she would be the one who would say, Greg, take a deep breath and relax. That's what I'm going to miss. I've also been threatened with the, that book and the multitude of notes that she keeps. So, I definitely cannot fill those shoes. Keep calling. If you don't, I'll call you. And it's been said once, maybe 100 times, so I'll make it 101. You will be sorely missed. And good luck.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to make my comments before Jeanette, so we'll let her get the last word in. I'll make my comments brief. We do have, we're in the middle of our budget process. We will have a public hearing on our budget coming up in April. We'll be meeting this Saturday, again, for a work session on our budget. So, that's moving along smoothly. I want to thank some of the men from Department of Public Works, who've actually worked on, you can't see this room in the back here because the cameras are facing us. But they've already done a tremendous amount of construction work in the room. And the company that we've hired to replace all of the audio/video guts of our whole system, they start tomorrow. And it didn't happen a moment too soon. We had a debate here yesterday, and, and I must say, I was embarrassed at how the system operated. It was just, it was terrible. And we tried everything we could to hold the system together. We ran a camcorder here that we're hoping we're going to be able to edit and be able to piece that together and have it run smoothly. But the system, I mean, to say the system has worn out its lifespan is really an understatement. I mentioned to even the guy who came in here, who was hired to do the job, brought him around here. The power transformer for it is actually a box under this desk, which has tubes in it. And I, I can't remember the last time they used tubes for any kind of a system. So, anyway, it's time has come. It's kind of an expensive system, but it will be state-of-the-art, and it'll bring us up to date. So, can't wait for that to get done. I have fantastic news. The, one of the most important things that the village relies on in terms of finance and our structure is to have a good rating with Standard and Poor. And this morning, I was notified by S&amp;P that they have reevaluated our S&amp;P rating, and they've actually upgraded us from an A category to an AA category. And that is a very significant milestone for us. It will enable us to save a tremendous amount of money when the village has to go ahead and borrow money in the future. So, they don't rerate municipalities all that often. So, I'm happy that they rerated us today, and that'll set with us, hopefully, for a good many years to come. So, that's, that's fantastic news. And finally, I want to join with my colleagues. You know, everyone has said it, and they've all said it better than I can say it. But I think the word, the main thing I just want to say is that it has truly been an honor to work with Jeanette Hayes. Some of the comments about how she is just a hard worker, you just can't say that enough. She has given her all to all the residents of this community. So, we're going to miss her a lot. And with that, I actually want to embarrass her a little bit more. And we want to give her a plaque in appreciation of her service. And I'll read it. "On behalf of a grateful community, we would like to thank Trustee Jeanette Hayes in appreciation for her dedicated service and positive contributions as Village of Tuckahoe trustee, presented by Mayor Steve A. Eklund and the Board of Trustees, April 2014." So, we want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, for the very last time, I'll say, member report from Trustee Jeanette Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, of course, is a little emotional for me. I'm sure you can gather that by looking at my face. It has been an absolute honor to serve as one of your village trustees for the past three years. And thank you for putting your confidence in me. I believe I have given 100% of my efforts towards our village, and I like to think that we are a little better off today than we were three years ago. Thank you, Mayor Eklund, my fellow trustees, Steve, Tom, and Greg, and everyone here tonight, including Chief John Costanzo, Frank DiMarco, Bill Williams, Camille DeSalvo, John Cavallaro, and our entire village staff. It has been an absolute pleasure working with each and every one of you. I will continue to help when called upon. However, there is no doubt in my mind that you will all continue to do an outstanding job serving our village. I am proud of so many initiatives that we have worked on during my years in office, including increasing communication with our residents through the revitalization of our quarterly village newsletter, which should have just arrived in everyone's mailbox, and working with our website developers, developer to actually make our website much more user-friendly. As well, continued oversight of our village budget. Every day, my focus was to work hard to keep our taxes at a manageable level, while at the same time ensuring our residents receive the top level of service they all deserve. Finally, although I won't be your village trustee a few weeks from now, I will continue to be a village resident and hope that as a resident, you will continue to feel comfortable reaching out to me as your neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that's going to give us the second opportunity to address the board. And I'd like to start with former Mayor Mike Martino, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor and trustees. I would also like to add my thanks to Jeanette on behalf of my entire family. Everybody knows, or should know, of the endless, the bottomless energy that Jeanette has. We are so fortunate as a village that she has basically given us the benefit of all of that energy, that hard work, that commitment. And yes, I think you have made the village, together with your partners, a better place over the last three years. You mentioned, and others mentioned, some of your accomplishments. And a couple stick in my mind. You were the first to get out there and really shake the trees to the multifamily groups out there. Our apartment buildings, a little bit were forgotten. You went out there on your own initiative, and you brought them together, and you brought them together with us, the village. Your work on the budget was extraordinary. So, we really benefited by your contribution. And I just hope you stay involved as a friend and as a helper to the village. Great job, kid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, County Legislator Sheila Marco.
And Tuckahoe resident.
And Tocco resident, Sheila Marco.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I did come here to speak about Jeanette, but I walked in when you were talking about United Water, so I can't help myself. I have to commend you on joining the consortium. A very smart move. You did it four years ago, and it paid off tremendously. The tariff that was introduced four years ago showed a hydrant price of fifteen hundred dollars, the very first tariff that was put before the Public Service Commission, cited fifteen hundred dollars. You have, I think, eighty-nine hydrants in the Village of Tocco, and this tariff proposes a cost of twelve hundred dollars. Your involvement in the consortium actually got the price of fifteen hundred down to about the high sevens, then into the eights, and it's somewhere in the nines now, because it increased on an increment every four years. So your little forty-one hundred dollars will pay off huge, because if they get the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase that they're seeking per hydrant, times eighty-nine, times four, the life of the tariff, this little village will take a hit of about seventy-five thousand dollars. So I encourage you and I commend you on that endeavor. So, of course, I'm here tonight because of trustee Jeanette Hayes, and I don't know if I can say it better than any one of you has said it tonight. Jeanette, it has been truly an honor and a privilege to have known you. While I didn't work with you in the capacity as a village trustee, I certainly enjoyed working with you as a county legislator, and I could call Jeanette on any issue, any item, there was no question she couldn't answer, and nobody knew the budget better than Jeanette Hayes knew the budget. And they say that, you know, the true mark of a significant act or service, and I think all of you said it, Mike said it, trustee Quigley hit on it, is when you take something and you leave it better than how you found it. And Jeanette, you truly did that. Your exuberance, your enthusiasm for your job, you took it to a new high, a new level, and I commend you on that. You made this a full-time job, and you are going to be missed, very large shoes to fill. And there's about three and a half hours left of what is your day, because on behalf of our county executive and chairman Michael Kaplowitz, this is your day in Westchester County, and hopefully you'll enjoy the rest of it, and we wish you, of course, the best of luck. I know you'll be successful in whatever you do. So again, we acknowledge you, and we truly do thank you for your service. Thank you very much. I'll give this to you afterwards.
Thank you. Very nice. We have our former trustee Luigi Marcocci, Tocco resident, town councilman Luigi Marcocci.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. I'm here tonight also to thank Jeanette Hayes, and I want everyone to know, I did everything I possibly could to try and get her to stay. I tried everything. I called her hundreds of times. I said, "You have to reconsider." You know, but there was no stopping her. And I just want to say, as a resident, but more importantly, as a friend, as a good friend, thank you so much. Thank you for all that you've done for this village. And how fitting is it tonight that, after I know how much work you've done on this budget, and to get an upgrade on your last meeting, it's just so appropriate, and it's so fitting, and it's not surprising. She did so much, not only in finance, but, as you all talked about, the newsletter, that's not a small undertaking. That takes hours and hours and hours to accomplish, and she makes it look easy. And she makes a lot of things look easy, but they're not. They require a lot of time, a lot of patience, and a lot of dedication, and she has those attributes better than, she's stellar when it comes to those types of things, and she's just a stellar person in general. So we're going to really miss you. On behalf of myself, my entire family, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeanette, on behalf of...
Name and address, please. I'm sorry.
Steve Alfassi. I'm here on behalf of chairman Ron Gallo from the zoning board. He sends his regrets that he couldn't be here, but on his behalf, we all would like to thank you for your service. Your shoes will be huge to fill, and thank you, I wouldn't be running if it wasn't for you leaving.
Christie Giorgio, fifty Columbus Avenue. I also want to echo everyone else who has congratulated Jeanette. I, you know, as someone from the other side of the aisle, you know, it's always appreciated for anyone's service, doesn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican, so I'm glad that you have done the service you have done, and I wish you the best in the coming years.
Thank you.
I'd like to also just talk to you about an issue I brought up yesterday, and I just want to say, whether I win or lose, you know, I would like this board to really consider the first item I brought up yesterday, which is the speed limit issue. You know, I've been walking the village, I'm sure Steve might have heard this, that, you know, we ask very much, "Well, what's on your mind?" And I have to say, at least three times, people have said speeding in some of these areas. I know one was on Highview. Someone was saying that Highview, there was a lot of, there was some people speeding on that. So, and when we talked, when I spoke to Steve Quigley about it, he said, "You know, when we talked to the police commissioner, he keeps saying, 'Well, you know what, they really are doing around thirty miles per hour.'" And so if people are perceiving that the speed is fast at thirty in some of these roadways, that maybe we should really start thinking about twenty-five. And I thought about, as I was walking down Wallace one time, I can't imagine anyone doing thirty between Underhill and Circuit, for example. I mean, that's such a narrow road that someone doing thirty, I think we would have bumper cars, frankly. So, you know, it's something, if, whatever the case may be, I would just encourage the board to consider at least having some public hearings on it and seeing, you know, where this leads. It may be that you keep it at thirty, but I do think it's something to consider.
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
Actually, it's a good timing that, Chris. I just had a conversation with the chief tonight and some correspondents. Chief, would you mind, you could at least address that, basically, about the possibly how to change speed limits in the village?
Yes, trustee Quigley asked me about a week or so ago, after speaking to some residents, I think it was on Oakland particularly, but it is a village-wide problem. And as I explained in an email, and certainly to Mr. DiGiorgio and anyone else who's interested, is that New York state law only allows municipalities to lower speed limit, town-wide, village-wide, city-wide, to thirty miles per hour. It doesn't, unless it's within a school zone, you can't lower it less than thirty miles an hour unless there's what they call area speed limits, and we do have some in the village. For instance, Columbus Avenue, parts of Fisher, parts of Lincoln Avenue are reduced area speed limits to twenty-five miles an hour. And as I explained to trustee Quigley, is that, one, the law doesn't allow us to lower it village-wide, and, two, you have to use that speed limit of an area speed limit very cautiously, because you need to put it in an area where, one, the reduction of speed is going to have an impact on traffic safety, and, two, it can be enforced reasonably. Most streets going more than twenty miles an hour is unreasonable, and the vehicle and traffic law actually allows police officers to enforce a section of the speeding ordinance or speeding laws, which is called unreasonable and prudent speeds. So I live on Verdi Avenue. If somebody was going twenty-five miles an hour on Verdi Avenue, that speed would be unreasonable and prudent. So a police officer would be able to write a ticket based on their observation. It doesn't have to be backed up by radar or some other kind of measuring device. So the law already does provide for people who drive recklessly without, you know, specifically to a speed limit of thirty miles an hour, or twenty-five, or fifteen, even in a school zone. So what we try to do, mimicking what the state is pretty much telling us to do, is where we can lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour in an area, where we could set up radar, where we could stop cars and enforce the law, we do that. Based on trustee Quigley's conversation with me and the complaints that he received on Oakland Avenue the very next day, we did set up our radar enforcement there. We caught somebody going at a very excessive speed. In fact, he added a suspended license as well, so he was arrested. So we are picking up enforcement in areas like Oakland or whatever, wherever we get complaints. We continually rotate where we do our traffic enforcement, but we can't lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour village-wide. It's not within the parameters of state law.
I remember a couple of years ago, we dropped the speed limit on Columbus, didn't we, to twenty-five?
That's, I mean, there are sections of Columbus, there's a section of Fisher, and there's sections of Lincoln that we have lowered it to twenty-five miles per hour.
Do you think maybe some people are, I don't think anyone would avoid Columbus to go over to Oakland to speed. The guy who was speeding, is he...
You know, believe it or not, we have found through traffic surveys, and back when we did surveys about putting speed bumps on Oakland Avenue, is that there are people who use Oakland Avenue to avoid traffic signals and stop signs to get to Bronx River Parkway. So if somebody was coming from Fisher Avenue, for instance, they'd make that first right before you hit the traffic light at Fisher and Columbus. They'd make the right onto Oakland and proceed all the way northbound on Oakland Avenue till they get to Leeward Drive. So it's not outside the realm of possibilities that people do try to use that as a shortcut. That was a specific street that we identified with traffic surveys, knowing that there are speeders at particular times of day, and we tried to match enforcement to that time of day.
You know, I think that's true, because, and I see that a lot, it seems that, and I could be wrong, but it just seems to me that the light is a little bit easier to get through if you are on Leeward Drive from, let's say, Oakland versus going down Dale Road all the way.
Yeah, we try not to tell too many people that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks.
So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, you did. Thank you. I'm outside, yes.
So is it correct, then, from what I'm hearing, that we would have to go to, let's say, the New York State Assembly and State Senate to maybe have like a home rule type of thing, if we wanted to do something like that?
We'd have to, I think we'd have to do some legal research, have our village attorney to speak to the chief and find out what the mechanics are. Yes?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? All right. Well, with that, if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Till next time, Tocco. Have a very good evening.